Welcome all to the City of Middletown Planning Board Meeting for May the 5th, 2021. Please rise for President of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Just to do a little work for our transcriptionist this evening, Planning Board members that are absent are Mr. Numcheck and Mr. Britto. Other attendees are our fire inspector, our building inspector Sexto Martinez, our engineer, Jeff Schumard, and our attorney, Richard Krogan. That's just for record-keeping. First on the agenda this evening is the approval of April the 7th, 2021 Planning Board Minutes. I need a motion to accept the minutes. Ms. Witt, I need a second. Mr. Madden, any questions? Discussion? Roll. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
I wasn't here.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. There's going to be a slight change in our agenda this evening. We're going to move Canal Street, excuse me, Myrtle Avenue first and Canal Street after Myrtle Avenue. I'd like to thank the applicants for agreeing to that. That just helps us out a little bit. So first up this evening will be Frank Vilano, 25 Myrtle Avenue, 91 Prospect Avenue, commercial space, office, and residential apartments. Just a reminder to all that if you're here for the first time, any applicant that's here for the first time, your appearance is considered a preliminary hearing, and the Planning Board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications tonight. That goes for each and every applicant that comes forward. Mr. Vilano, would you like to explain your intent, please?
Do we have the mailings?
We have the mailings, Ms. Two? Yes, thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Frank Vilano, and I represent Andre Ritchie. I do have the mailings and the certified mail. Only, well, the notifications had gone out. One was returned. No recipient, so that's included with the certificated mailing that I just handed in. The application is for a use permit, for special use, and that would be to convert the existing building within the same footprint for three residential, one-bedroom apartments, and retain the downstairs as an office, consistent with the allowed uses in that zone.
Okay, Mr. Vilano. Little background here, what's come to light is that this property, under some research by the DPW, the Planning Board, and our tax assessor, there's, this is a two-parcels property at one time, somehow got joined together. The address was originally on Prospect Avenue. When the parcels got joined together, somehow or another, the address got changed to Myrtle Avenue. This is now being researched by the assessor's office, because the address does make a difference.
Understood.
And that at one, you are presently being taxed as a one-story structure with a basement. That also changes the code and the zone, and what you can do with your apartments and commercial space. So the mayor would like the tax assessor to completely review and research this before we go any further with this application.
Understood.
Okay. So what we can do, we're going to open the public hearing to see if anyone wants to comment. We're going to keep the public hearing open while the tax assessor completes their research. Unfortunately, you'll have to come back.
It's my pleasure.
Maybe, depending upon what that research flushes out, you may have some other work to do. Okay? So I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to address this application, please step forward. I don't know publicly here if anyone has in, is interested in the comment. If not, I'll move to Ms. Hanson. Anyone online wishing to comment?
Not at this time.
Ms. Two, do we have anyone on the phone? Do we have anyone that sent any written comments in? Okay. In that case, Mr. Vilano, we're going to keep the public hearing open, and we're going to call for a motion to adjourn for future consideration. I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Higby, any discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Hanson, or Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. My apologies, but we'll see you next. Thank you.
Appreciate you hearing it, and look forward to seeing you again. Good night.
I think just stay in touch with Martina, so we can let you know when the research is done, and to have you back.
Okay, absolutely. Have a good night.
Next on our agenda is 108 La Cour Street LLC, 9-29 Canal Street, residential apartments. I'd like to first thank you for changing up on the agenda.
No problem.
Gracious of you, thank you. Ms. Two, mailings?
We do have the mailings, but we have the mailings.
Okay, we have the mailings. Okay, thank you. Your intent?
Good evening. I'm Peter Cirillo. I'm here with Andrew Leiter, who is just walking back in. He is the managing member of 108 La Cour Street LLC. What Mr. Leiter would like to do is develop 9-29 Canal Street, as most people in Middletown knows, know as classy leather goods, into 54 residential apartments, which would comprise approximately 108,000 square feet on the first, second, and third floors. There would be 15 one-bedroom units, 49 two-bedroom units. There is going to be some commercial space in about 20, which will equal about 27,000 square feet, which would be located in a portion of the first floor and on the basement level. On the site, the building largely comprises the site, so there is a small rear yard, which we are going to develop into outdoor space for the residents and for the commercial spaces. Our intent is to maintain and repair the existing pavers, walls, railings, et cetera. We are proposing some new landscaping. We are also proposing a connection to South Street through the adjacent city-owned property, which is the federal, used to be the federal courthouse, via a ramp. We are providing parking for the residential apartments at an adjacent site, which is the former Acme bus site on Fulton Ave. There will be 105 required spaces for the apartments on that, in that parking lot, and approximately 85 left over for the future development of that building into a fire truck museum. As requested by the Board, we did site lighting plans for both sites. We've previously talked about the utilities. O and R did, I've been in contact with O and R, and they can provide enough gas and enough electric. We're bringing in a new electric service from South Street to a relocated transformer. The gas will come off of Canal Street, and we will locate the meters on the right side of the building facing Fulton Street. The water demand, I did reconfirm with my engineers, is about 20,000 gallons a day. That is every single space being their demand, which obviously will not happen every single day. We did complete a flow test with the City of Middletown DPW. We probably will need to do a booster pump. That is just part of sort of our bid documents when we get to that point. Fire safety, again, I messed with Mr. Atkins twice at the site. We've agreed that the back alley cannot be used as a fire access lane, and that the fire department can access the Canal Street roof from the courthouse and theater parking Andy Leiter did attend the meeting regarding the city garbage plan. The drawings currently do not address anything, because that meeting happened before I, or after I submitted those drawings. And basically, that's the project. I did receive Mr. Schumard's comments late today.
Okay.
I did read them. Pretty minor in nature in my, my book, but I don't know if we want to go through them tonight, or...
We'll give Mr. Schumard a chance to ask questions or make any comments. Just for the Board's edification, they mentioned a sanitation plan. It's something that the city is developing, because there were questions the Planning Board had about how the trash was going to be picked up, how the residents were going to take care of their trash, and the city is already one step ahead of that for some large projects in the city, especially the DMU zone where sanitation is, can be difficult. There's going to be a plan set forth that each applicant will have to submit a sanitation plan, how they plan for the residents to get rid of their garbage, how they're going to pick up their dumpsters. So that's what he mentioned, and it was something the Planning Board had been concerned about, so the city is going to try to address those issues. All right?
One thing I'd like to add is there, there is going to be a central pickup, basically right across the street in the municipal lot, opposite the main entry to the building.
Which the city is planning on having.
Correct.
Right, okay. I don't know if you have enough room to show that on your plans coming, going forward or not, I don't know. It'd be a good idea, just to show...
If I can get a copy of a site survey? Yes, I can.
We're going to move on to opening the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to step forward and make any comments? Ms. Hanson, anyone online wishing to comment?
Not at this time.
Ms. Two, anyone, any on the telephone? Any written questions or responses? None? Okay. In that case, we're going to go to the Board. If you have any questions or comments, this is really our first official meeting with them. We've had some preliminaries here, so that's why we had a public hearing this evening, to move the process forward.
Mr. Atkins, did you have concerns with the Acme?
Yes, the Acme parking lot, currently, right now, there's a lot of unregistered vehicles, and there's some other, other things going on in the building, as far as an auto, you know, some type of repair work and stuff like that, and I know that that's got to come before the Planning Board at a separate time for the fire museum, and if there's going to be repairs done to fire trucks or whatever their, commercial vehicles. So that's my, that's my biggest concern, is the amount of unregistered vehicles that are there now. I'm assuming they're going to be removed prior to this project moving forward, and then the use of that building prior to Planning Board approval, because that building's been vacant or not used as any type of business for some time, so there's no current standards set up with fire, you know, fire protection, fire inspections, and all that. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes. Yeah, we've addressed everything else with fire access and all that, and they've been very good with coming up with solutions for us, so...
You know, unfortunately or fortunately, the Acme property has become part of this project, and we're going to want everything cleaned up.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Schumard, do you wish to make any comments?
I'd just like to reiterate just a couple different points in the letter I wrote. The Acme parking lot is presently paved. There seems to be few proposed changes, except for a removal of the concrete tank and I guess some restriping. Question is, are you proposing to leave the asphalt as is, maybe modify? You're not going to tear up any asphalt, so that would create a storm drainage and a sedimentation issue if that were to be gone, to be done. The pedestrian access, or people walking back and forth from Canal Street to the parking lot, I assume they would, they would walk along Fulton Street to Canal Street and up, up Canal Street. If they were to go up Mulberry Street and go crosslots through the city a lot, I don't think that would be so good, because then it would have to cross three lanes of traffic, and that's too wide of a street to really entertain a painted walkway or so, so, you know, I think residents ought to be encouraged to use the existing sidewalks. And that's, that's about it. I had a couple of questions on the EAF, which is, you know, pretty minor stuff.
So as far as the access back and forth between Acme and Canal Street property, we did have a meeting actually with Tony and the mayor and Maria, and there are crosswalks at corners, and in essence, the mayor said that's really not the Planning Board's issue. Tony, I guess I'd look to you to reaffirm that?
That's, that's correct. No, Mr. Schumard's missed, makes a point, but we expect people to follow the sidewalks, the crosswalks, their safety is paramount, but they have to follow what is there for them for safety. We don't plan on doing anything additional, either you or the city, to make that any different.
The other, only other concern I just raised is when the construction is underway to renovate the apartments and whatnot, where are the, the construction equipment and the delivery vehicles going to be parked? I mean, are they going to obstruct traffic on Canal Street, or are they going to be using that, that area there just to the north of the building?
Well, during construction, we are definitely going to have to kick out Fort Knox and all the tenants, so the building will be vacant, maybe in phases, if we can keep some in, obviously keep some rental income coming in. My belief is we would probably make the north end of the building where the entry to Fort Knox is, where the old Reds was removed, there's some room there, that would probably be the area that stuff would be loaded and unloaded.
That'd be your staging area and your storage area and whatnot, so...
Again, we do not have a lot of property. They would probably be storing materials in the, in the back courtyard. Potentially, on the south side of the building, there is some overhead doors. If it's vacant, perhaps we could have them store material inside that basement.
All right, thank you.
And again, there is a driveway there, so either end, they could bring materials.
Thank you. Any other Board members have any questions?
I, I was curious about the tank at Acme. Is there, Acme, is there fuel in the tank? I remember when they were a bus company, remember that tank being brought in front of our board? I thought there was a tank there.
The, the tank is gone.
Oh, it's gone already?
The only thing that's left is the concrete abutment that was, it was on. Actually, and even on the existing site survey, it shows, I believe, two oil tanks, or fuel tanks, and those are, those are gone as well.
I believe the plan calls for a removal of the retention wall or...
Yep.
That was once for the fuel tank.
Exactly.
Right, to increase your parking.
So we will, we will, where, where that gets removed, it's partially in the parking lot, we will pave that. It's, it's about 500 square feet of paving.
Jeff, is short form EAF required?
They have, they have prepared a short form. That is appropriate. I, I've asked them to take a look at it in a couple different areas. Once, once they do that, then, you know, we'll have to prepare a part two, which is done by the, you know, by, by the, by the city, by, by us.
And is there any problem with us declaring lead agency?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
We are not claiming lead agency.
We are.
Correct.
And we will be. We were just...
Well, I do, I have clients who want to be lead agencies, so, and I always discourage it.
We won't do a neck deck tonight, we'll just do the lead agency, so if you need anything pertaining to that with, with anyone, any, if you're vendors or anything, O and R, anybody, you'll be able to move forward.
Okay.
Okay? But we won't do the neck deck until you revise your EAF and everything else. Ms. Hanson, do we have anybody online for the public hearing?
We do not.
Okay. We're going to, I think we're going to leave the public hearing open.
Okay.
At least one more meeting, so that next time around, you're getting that close, so, well, I think we're going to leave it open just in case anyone wants to send any written comments in.
Okay. They have 30 days to provide written comment anyway.
Right. Board members, one more shot, anything you want, concerns you want to address? Mr. Martinez, we didn't ask you, but do you have any issues?
I have no...
Okay.
Just curious, when was this built?
I, I really don't know. I know it was built in phases, there were multiple additions on the building, probably early 1800s. Andy, do you know?
Mid 1800s.
Mid 1800s.
Wow.
I just like mystery, curious.
Okay, so before we move on, we're going to, as a Planning Board, declare lead agency. So whereas, the City of Middletown Planning Board has received an application from 108 La Cour Street LLC, tax map designation, section 35, block 32, lot 24.1, and located in the DMU zone, for a site plan and special use permit for the construction of commercial occupancies on the first floor and apartments on the second and third floor. The project is located at 9-29 Canal Street in the City of Middletown. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Middletown Planning Board is declaring its intent to be lead agency with respect to the proposed action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, subject to the city engineer's final comments, and be it further resolved that the City of Middletown Planning Board is authorizing the applicant to distribute the lead agency coordination request in accordance with Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law and 6 NYCRR, Part 617, to all interested and involved agencies, to be filed with our Clerk of the City of Middletown. I need a motion for lead agency.
Tony?
Mr. Madden, I need a second. Ms. Witt? Yes?
Andy says you might have only said second and third floors? It's actually a portion of the first as well.
That is correct.
Okay, I can put portion of the first floor in there. I can amend this. We'll amend it officially, so that when it's signed, it'll, it'll state, "Commercial occupancies on the first floor, and partial apartments on the first floor, second and third floors." We'll, we'll make sure we amend it properly, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Madden, I have a second by Ms. Witt. Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we'll see you next month. Pardon me?
You, you said that you wanted to keep the public hearing open. Did you need a motion to keep it open?
I don't think so. As long as I don't close it, it'd be open for next month. Just in case anybody comments, doesn't, hasn't, wouldn't be able to make it tonight, didn't catch it in time, it's a large project. I don't see any issues.
We understand.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda this evening is a preliminary hearing only, not for any action, but for future presentation and possible action at a date not yet determined. And this is for Anthony DeVos, 19 Preston Street Auto Repair Shop. How you doing?
Good. Good evening to the, the Board. Again, my name is John Fuller, been here before, before you. Representing tonight, Mr. Anthony DeVoe, who is with me here, who is the owner of a property that he purchased at the end of Preston, which has an existing building, which is about a little over 2,500 square feet. It's approximately 40 by 60, an existing building that was previously owned by Louis Sine, who he purchased it from. His proposal is to do an auto repair shop at that location in the C2 zone. We prepared a site plan to present before the Board, had gotten some preliminary feedback relative to the fact that the site had not previously had. It does have municipal water, which was brought in a number of years ago, but it did not have sewer. We were asked to pursue, initially, we were looking to do a septic, but discouraged to do so, so we have engineered a, a pump station, which will pump sewage up to Academy, and which we've detailed in the, in the latest drawings that we presented for submittal before you. Mr. DeVoe currently owns a facility, or rents a facility, I should say, in Otisville, where he, over time, he's been in business for several years and developed a lot of clientele, specifically clientele here in the Middletown area. So the location benefits him from a business standpoint to locate in the City of Middletown to service his clientele. He does general auto service repair and towing. We have detailed on the plan some basic information relative to the layout of the site. There is, he is proposing a 50 by 50 fenced-in area where he would store some cars overnight or over a period of time. Right now, he anticipates that it would be no more than 10 cars at a time on the site inside of a fenced-in area. He's available to speak to any questions that you have tonight relative to his business. I asked him to come along so that we could flush out any comments or questions that you have about what he intends to do with the facility. Again, it's about a 2,500 square foot, it's an existing structure, probably a little bit more than 15 feet tall. It does have three bays for which him to operate, plus an office and associated entry and bathroom. He does have an open building permit to make some renovations to the building, which have been ongoing, and so we're here tonight to, to present this to you and answer any questions that you have, so we can move forward.
That's great, appreciate it. The major, the major issue was the septic system.
Yep.
And, right, you were strongly encouraged, because the City of Middletown no longer allows septic systems.
Yeah, understood.
And you had choices, and so we, we now have an updated plan.
Yes.
Which our engineer will all have a chance to look at, once again, and the Commissioner of Public Works will also have a chance to look at again. And of course, now the Board has an updated plan. So any comments? I mean, I don't expect you to have, you don't have to have them this evening if you don't like, but we will go through a Q and A, no problem. This will give us time to further research it also. But I will open the, the time period up for questions from the Board, if you have any questions.
Do you...
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Ms. Houston.
I apologize.
No, no, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I was just wondering if you have a plan for heating in the wintertime?
Yeah, currently, the, the gas main doesn't extend down there, so he would, would look to install a propane tank that would provide heating.
Yeah, just was concerned about safety with that, and that's all. Thank you.
Is that noted on the plan, Mr. Fuller?
If it's not, we'll add it to the, add it to the...
Well, you'll need to add it, only because Mr. Atkins will be looking for whatever alternate means of heat that you're going to put there, for safety reasons. And the main issue is normally with these facilities, auto repair, is that the City of Middletown does not want any of these facilities to turn into junkyards.
Understood.
Okay? All vehicles must be inspectable, saleable, I mean, we...
Registered.
Pardon me?
Registered.
Registered. We understand it takes time to get parts and, you know, sometimes... We understand it takes time to get parts, and, you know, sometimes vehicles sit there, but we have code enforcement people who are looking for that. So it's just important that your applicant know that we're going to be, we might be a little strict on something, but the issue is, things have turned into junkyards, and it's not becoming.
Understood. And the client, the applicant is here, and he hears you, and I was specific, and we've noted on the plan that we would do a maximum of storage of 10 vehicles inside that 50 by 50 fenced-in area.
That's greatly appreciated.
Yep.
All right. Anything else from the board that you can think of right now? Probably going to invite them back next month for a public hearing, so we'll have more time to take a look at your plan and ask questions from our engineer and our commissioner.
Are hours of operation noted?
I don't...
Yes, they are.
They are, they are on the plan. I didn't notice them, but I haven't a chance to look at all of them.
Yeah, in the general notes, we, hours of operation are noted as Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and Saturday, 8 to 12. We have indicated 24-hour towing, because that's a part of his business. And again, no more than 10 cars. He, number of employees, expects two, himself and an additional worker to be with them, with him, and so...
Okay.
And also, I've noted on the plans, there will be no outside storage beyond those 10 vehicles, no outside storage of any equipment or parts, and no garbage, so...
Great. And I assume you have some type of method of disposing of oils and...
Yep.
How you doing?
Good, nice to meet everybody. Yes, I have a company that comes and takes all the oils, and picks it up and disposes it for me, at the current facility that I'm at.
Great. Good. Is that noted also on the plan, or...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the owner? You did hear me about the junkyard, like, divisions?
Yes, of course.
Okay, good.
I, I like things clean myself. I like things neat and organized myself, because the presentation of your business represents the work that you do, so I want it to look good myself.
Great. That'd be greatly appreciated. All right. If no one has anything else for the applicant or his engineer? Thank you, gentlemen. We'll see you next month.
Is this a project we need to declare lead agency on?
I don't think so.
The disturbance isn't...
We can talk about it with our, with Jeff, but I didn't think so.
Okay.
Jeff could change my mind. All right, folks. Motion for adjournment. Mr. Madden? Second, Mr. Higbee? All in favor?
Aye.